This is the River City Council meeting on March 2.
All right, let's go and start around the instructions. We'll start on my left with Councilmember Watson. Right as you take a sip of your coffee.
Fine, it's good morning. Good morning, Senator Watson, uh, by District County.
Morning, everyone. And I can tell you, kids, I'm every issue. Let's get everybody in the commission. Payman, Denver, American Indian. Meredith Glitz, she/her, I'm with Councilwoman Stacy Gilmore.
Stacy Gilmore, District D11. Jamie Torres, West Denver District 3. Diana Romero Campbell, South Denver District 4. That'd be best lucky. Fantastic. Um, all right, well, we have one action item today. Oh, is Councilmember Cashman online? Fantastic. Sorry, Councilmember Cashman, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Paul Cashman, South Denver District 6.
All right, sorry about that. Now we are going to get started with our one action item today.
Meet with Joe Cashman.
Councilmembers Gilmore and Torres, do you want to start?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, want to, um, welcome everybody here today. And, uh, before we get started, we wanted to make time for a blessing, um, by Ms. Cecilia Bullbear. And so we'll, um, ask her to maybe come up to the microphone there and do a blessing to open. And then I'll, uh, go ahead and hand it over to Shannon and Ivan here.
Um, first of all, I'd like to thank you for, it's an honor to be here. My, um, family, I call them my family. It's the Denver American Indian Commissioners. And, um, I'm the oldest of them all.
He's tapping in.
I would like to do a prayer because, um, wherever us Indians go, whatever, when we have a council meeting or some kind of powwow or somewhere to socialize or anywhere, we start out with the prayer. And, um, the prayer says that, um, we have to take care of each other and we love each other. And, um, we always have to try to be positive so that the prayer works. We may least say our prayers that way. So I'm going to pray in my language because, um, my cousin was saying, he said, um, don't hurt the elders because they're in speak. And I said, why? And he said, they're the only ones that have their language. And so I'll pray in my language. From Gashi love what I'm I'm bad to watch there yet. I'm walking like you come in. I'm here, my name. The west there in June. You're missing. It should be there. Now, don't know, let me end up in the which was I mean, no, oh, yeah, no, she like you have it just ever change. We thank you.
The hands are on.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bullbear. We appreciate your words and your blessing this morning. Um, and so we are here this, uh, this morning to talk about Indigenous Peoples' Day. Uh, I have to give, um, all of the credit, um, all of the work on this, most definitely to Shannon Alcott. Um, she's the person who emailed, um, about, uh, council considering this. And so, um, I, I think it's important to recognize the person who reached out and started us on this path, uh, to getting here today. And then also Raven Payment, um, alongside, um, working hand in hand to get us here today. And so, um, we'll go ahead, um, and, uh, go through the PowerPoint. Um, but then also we know that we have, um, time for folks to speak. And I think we had, uh, three or four folks sign up, but we've got, um, possibly Madam Chair room for a, a few others. If, um, if that's great, thank you so much. Um, to, to hear from folks, um, why this, uh, is something that you would want to support and why it's important. So, um, I'll stop there and want to, um, definitely give, um, Councilwoman Torres, uh, a space to, um, talk on this. We've been, um, friends for a long time. Um, we were in leadership Denver together. Um, served it. I won't, I won't, I won't. We don't age, um, only get better. Um, and so, you know, um, working together and, and being, um, council president and pro temp and then supporting her and being president and then supporting, um, Councilwoman, um, Council President Sandoval as becoming, um, president. Um, I have to say that I hope that I'm doing my work, um, in supporting others in these roles. And so I want to go ahead and give Councilwoman Torres, um, space. All right, thank you so much. And I just want to, um, also acknowledge Clerk Lopez, who worked with the American Indian Commission in 2016, uh, to establish the commemorative holiday. And, and that, uh, began in, on October 10th of 2016. And it's been, um, kind of part of, uh, me carrying the torch for District 3 that, um, I, I bring a proclamation each year. And so it's really exciting, um, to be able to turn this page. Um, and, uh, really happy to be able to work with this commission and these women in particular, um, on being able to do that. So, thank you, Madam Chair. Wonderful. And then, um, in, you know, the spirit of collaboration as well, um, with this work, it's been an honor to also, uh, invite, uh, my fellow Latinas on City Council to, uh, co-sponsor this bill as well. And so, um, lots of, of firsts and, uh, hopefully the start to many, many more, which are important. And so I'm going to go ahead and Meredith, um, from my council office, thank you, Meredith. She helped us with research and policy and everything. And so, uh, she's going to drive this morning. And so we'll go ahead, um, and start off Raven and Shannon, and then we'll dive in on my part, so.
Um, hi, thank you. Um, so I'm just going to give a traditional greeting first. Um, how much you have been, I'm pet to watch the image of me, I'm, I'm pet to watch the mataku, mataku api. Uh, Shannon Alcott, I'm a chief of the city, Denver, uh, to the city, Colorado, um, L W T. What power state L W T? Um, yeah, it's a shit, a door, shit, and a, Shannon, we need she a. Um, hello, my name is Shannon Alcott. I was born in Tuba City, Arizona. I'm from Denver, Colorado. And I just greeted you in both, um, my Dene language as well as my Lakota. Although, um, both of those tribes are not the only ones represented in this, um, position. Thank you very much. Um, so with our first slide, we, uh, have had a lot of conversations, um, for this bill, uh, for Indigenous Peoples' Day. Um, a lot of collaboration went into it. Um, and, uh, I think it would be, and of course, we're very excited. Sorry. Um, Indigenous Peoples' Day, uh, was first proposed in 1977 at the United Nations International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations Against the Americans. There it goes.
Sorry. Uh, buju and then I'm a good enough, then Raven Payment, Indishna Ka, then Gugu and Gudam. Um, my name is Raven Payment. I am Anishinaabeque. I come from the Kiwinaw Bay Mills and Sioux St. Marie Band of Chippewa Indian Band, Chippewa Nations. Um, I am also a fish clan. So that is a traditional greeting in Anishinaabe. Memo in la la la. I'm going to work on Dukshin and I am very caffeinated. Um, so I think everyone can read the bullets on the PowerPoint. So to just kind of go off of that. Um, I think that Indigenous Peoples' Day is a foundation of not only undoing a fictionalized, sanitized and whitewashed narrative of brutal colonialism, but it is also the removal of celebrating the violent colonization of our lands and the brutal treatment of our relatives across Turtle Island and the Caribbean islanders that discovered Mr. Columbus lost his sea. Um, despite the uncomfortable truths, Indigenous Peoples' Day represents a celebration of our culture, our intelligence, our strength and our resolve that we have endured the unthinkable because of Columbus, his ilk. If they had had this way, myself and Shannon, the entire American Indian community, um, in this room and beyond, wouldn't be able to be here and have this conversation. Um, inspired by the civil rights movement in the 1960s, our organization with the Red Power Movement and their activism ended the federal termination policy era, which took away tribal lands, identities and rights. In addition to these protests, occupations and the trail of broken treaties, the idea for this holiday was initially born. Um, as noted here, while other municipalities and state governments observe Indigenous Peoples' Day, less than a handful have formalized it as an official holiday. On a federal level, we still have a long way to go in many areas, if you're probably reading the news like I am. Um, but we do have a chance to make history here for the state of Colorado and municipality of the city of Denver. So, next slide, please.
Um, as Gilmore and Torres mentioned in 2016, the city council voted to recommend October 12th, this Indigenous Peoples' Day, um, and, uh, with a commemorative holiday, um, stating that Colorado is the ancestral homeland of 48 tribes, um, that the Denver metro area is home to the descendants 100 and 110 of Denver, that Denver will continue to promote racial equity and justice for all people and oppose discrimination towards Indigenous people.
All right. So one of the things I wanted to note too is when we talked about, um, this holiday being talked about with the United Nations in 1977. At that time, it was still illegal for American Indians to practice their cultures and ceremonies. It wasn't until 1978 with the American Indian Religious Freedom Act that we were finally able to legally, um, live fully in our truths, um, despite racism and bigotry that we still endure today. Um, one of the things that I want to point out, you know, this slide talks about 2021 President Joe Biden. But this work and this holiday is born through the people who have walked before us. Both our ancestors who have walked on and also elders, um, some of whom are sitting in the room right now. Um, going off the cuff right now, I was really struck talking with, uh, Mr. Sid Whitey over here that he's been marching for this holiday for over 30 years. Um, you know, even before whether Shannon and I were born or had this idea, there were many, many people that were working towards this holiday, um, and this recognition. Um, you know, we would also be remiss if we didn't acknowledge our accomplices and allies within the Chicano, the Latino, the Black, and also our Indigenous relatives to the South. Um, through their work and their advocacy and often their confrontation to sometimes detriment, we're able to sit here and have this conversation. Um, I also want to recognize in this history, um, all the council members who are here that were committed to listening and then taking action.
Acknowledge the downshift.
You know, Indigenous Peoples' Day might seem like it's just a holiday that is flippant, flippant, that it doesn't matter. But it's more than just a symbolic gesture. Um, it is a commitment. It acknowledges our history. It uplifts our community. Um, and it's also a commitment to do better moving forward. Um, it's a reminder that our recognition matched with this action ensures that our community's voices, our rights and our contributions are valued, not just every day, but also throughout the year. Um, and it was that intention and that spirit that I think we find ourselves here today.
All right. Well, thank you. You can see, um, the passion and, um, just thank you so much for sharing, um, your culture, your history and how important this is for us, especially at this moment in time. And I'm always learning. And, um, you know, when we started, um, looking at this policy, we all got together and, um, Councilmember Gonzalez Gutierrez couldn't be in those meetings, um, because of sunshine, um, laws. And so we had one of her aides there and, but the four of us really kept this moving forward. And so, um, you know, with holidays, um, in the city, uh, we have the 12 paid holidays for career service employees. Um, if you all remember back in 2024, the mayor had, um, provided wellness days, um, to city employees. And it's my understanding that those wellness days were paid, um, through vacancy savings that agencies had. Um, and so, um, the last change that we did to Denver's legal holidays were in 2022 when, um, we added Juneteenth. And so we utilized the Juneteenth process, um, to, you know, do this, um, uh, holiday for the city, a day of, um, reflection and acknowledgement for the city. And then prior to that, you can see that, um, we had Cesar Chavez Day, Replaced Election Day, and then, um, a personal holiday day with a birthday holiday. And then we had MLK Day, um, added in 1985. Um, so we had to ask the Office of Human Resources to conduct a study for us, a survey of other municipalities to understand, um, how many were celebrating this paid city holiday, how many were, um, considering, um, doing something in this space. And so I really have to, um, give huge credit to, um, Nicole over, um, in the Office of Human Resources because she was the one who did the surveys and worked with us, uh, to gather this important information for us to get here. And so, um, some of the things that we found out was a consideration that we needed to make was, um, each, um, holiday, um, for overtime costs, it costs approximately 1.3 million in overtime pay. And, um, so that was really the magic number that we needed, um, to, in partnership, uh, with the mayor's office. And I want to definitely give, um, Mayor Johnston's administration, um, credit because they've really been helpful, um, in, you know, making sure that they were okay with, um, vacancy savings or agency savings to be utilized for the 1.3 million in overtime for employees if needed. Um, and then in the 2026 budget, um, we will just write that into the budget. And so it won't be an issue going forward. But, um, we didn't want to ask, um, the Denver American Indian Commission or the community to have to wait another year, um, to do this work. It seemed, um, most logical to do it, um, right now. And it still took us six months, um, to get to this spot. So, um, and so then the total compensation, um, for one day for all city employees is approximately 5.2 million. And, um, that's just to let you know what it costs. And, um, really it's a soft cost because, um, prior to this, um, legislation, the city had already accounted for this being a day of work. And so, um, and just, you know, in full transparency, wanted to let you know, um, that, that that is a soft cost. But really the 1.3 million is where we're appreciative of the mayor's office agreeing that this was important for us to get here. Um, I did check with Clerk Lopez about the timelines for elections. He didn't identify any issues, um, that, that there might be, um, collective bargaining agreements. We know that holidays get negotiated in, um, and John Griffin, um, isn't here today, but I always want to give John Griffin, um, kudos because, um, he manages and represents city council in the collective bargaining process with our Department of Safety Agency, so fire, police, et cetera. And so, um, he had asked, um, prior to us coming here today as a courtesy, if it was okay to share the legislation with the collective bargaining unit so that we're working in partnership so they're aware, um, that this, um, hopefully will be coming through and passed. Um, and then the potential service impacts to residents. We know trash, um, and other services might be impacted, but there's plenty of ways that we can alert people and let them know that. And then, um, the next slide is the generally prevailing practice for benefits. And so if we want to go ahead and, um, go to that slide and I just explained that all to you. I'm a little bit nervous. This is like, uh, I feel like it's, um, a recital or where all my relatives are here and I am so nervous. You would not believe it because this is so important, um, that, that I want to make sure we get this right. So, um, basically talk through all of that, um, for you all. So I'll let you read that and then we can go ahead and go to the next slide. You see, I've memorized this a little bit. Um, so then the survey results, um, nice table with all of those survey results. I have to thank Nicole again because they did the work just to put them on a PowerPoint and, and get that ready for us. And so, um, it, you know, talks about, um, how many municipalities were participating in the survey, the number of responses, et cetera. And so we did that part of the policy work. Next slide. And then looking at other cities, um, you know, older, um, as Indigenous Peoples' Day, um, as a holiday, Golden and Pueblo, um, and then, um, we weren't able to find any other cities, um, considering the holiday. And then you'll see there the peer cities, um, that do have this holiday. Um, next slide. And so based on the survey results, we recommend adopting Indigenous Peoples' Day as an official city holiday. You see all of the sponsors there, um, and bringing this forward to honor Indigenous people and commemorate their histories and cultures. Um, I have to really say from, um, my, my space right here that it was an honor doing this work. And thank you for allowing me to serve in this way. Um, I will always be all secretary if you need me to because, um, the work that you're doing is so, so important. And I feel like I've probably made friends for life during this process, accomplices for life, um, which is needed, which is how community shows up, is how we are all here around this table today is that we showed up for each other. And so it's a sacred space that we're in right now and that we're doing something that has never been done before. It's the beginning, not the end. And so, um, we would designate the second Monday in October as the official holiday. And we would repeal the commemorative holiday that I know that Clerk Lopez worked so hard um, and had many of these same conversations with community. And at that point, to take on a different meaning, that the true meaning should be. And maybe we need to let a little bit more history go by and the pandemic and everything that we've been through to really come back full circle and understand how important it is for community and to recognize this. And so, um, with that, um, we'll keep going here. We're in our schedule. Again, this would apply in 2025. And I think that's, um, the end of the slide deck there. And so, um, I want to pause there and see, um, if any of my colleagues have anything that they would like to add. And then I know we have, um, public comment as well. And, um, if folks didn't sign up, um, that's okay. We'll just, um, follow, uh, the Madam Chair lead here and, and go from there. But wanted to give, um, my colleagues an opportunity.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm used to lean. Old habits. Um, no, I just, I wanted to thank you. Um, and as you said, you know, in your remarks, both of you said, this isn't, this isn't something that came about new, but it is something that our ancestors have been fighting for, for a long time and are walking alongside all of you and trying to make these types of things happen. And then we know that these are, um, these are the steps that are necessary. Uh, and I'm grateful for the leadership here, um, of, you know, these, you know, three veteran council members, uh, I call, like, some of the veteran council members, I call them my council Yoras, um, because, you know, they, they instill some of that wisdom of how to navigate things in the city, um, to get this kind of work done. Um, and as, as a newer council member, I will say that I would gladly carry on, um, knowing that, you know, Councilwoman Gilmore is, is reaching towards her end and, um, knowing that there are many of us, I think, around this table who want to continue to champion any of this work and whatever is needed going forward. And I have that commitment, um, to the Indigenous community, absolutely. And, and as you stated, as, uh, someone who identifies as Chiana, um, honoring both my Mexican and Indigenous roots, um, this is incredibly important. I know to, to, um, my community as well, um, to my family who were in those fights before I was even born. They were out there marching in the streets, um, to, to be, to stand alongside and be there in support of our brothers and sisters. So, thank you. Um, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I come personally, I say thank you to really doing this work. I've been in the city since 2012 and I remember doing the Indigenous holiday and exploring through city council. Literally the visceral that came through council members who supported that. And not understanding why people can't be open to other holidays. And, um, having Columbus Park in my council district for most of my life and calling it Barasa Park and having the, the Sunday dance there for over 20 years to pray for that to be changed when it's like right by Shoshan, right by Navajo, right, right in the heart of Northwest Denver, um, was something that I had to struggle with growing up and had to come to amends with. And then with the help of all of our communities, we are making incremental change in Denver and living by our values. And I think that's what this piece of legislation does, is it helps us remind us what our values are. And when I talk and as council president, I always, even my, my office is along the Platte River. I always remind people, they always start about the gold rush. People were here prior to that. And I have to say that every single time and every single meeting that people were not here, we were not founded because of the gold rush. And so it's something that has been a huge conversation on Platte River, especially by at the level of somebody who's following my values and following, following things that I want to have a legacy for. So what is in my control within Denver City Council and under represent our values. So thank you all for me. Thank you. The budget, I would say as council president, I was in these meetings with the mayor saying, well, we're the legislative body. We're going to do this with or without giving you really money. We're that woman. And because that's just the way it works in the strong mayor form of government. And they, they, the administration really saw the importance. So just want to give kudos to the administration as well for finding the money in the budget so that we can, if this passes, we can celebrate this in 2025 instead of waiting till 2026, which feels much better for me in the, in the political environment that we're currently in right now. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Um, any other sponsors want to?
I, um, yeah. Thank you so much for being here and bringing this. And thank you, Councilwoman Gilmore and Torres and Council President for your leadership to get us to this point to where it isn't this huge thing where we're having negative negativity here in the city. I was reflecting like Councilwoman Romero, I had a first Latina to represent our districts. And so that's part of what has contributed to this first, um, record of Latinas in city council and remembering the indigeneity and that, and to our elders and elders of this land, um, to reteach and to continue to teach us and guide us and what we've done and what's missing and all the work that has been done for us to be here because all those prayers and all those things have led to our ability to be here as well. And so just come and it's so beautiful. Thank you for the prayer as well, Cecilia. And when you say it's an honor for you, all I can feel is like just being at this table right now is such an honor for me. And I just want to name that and thank my
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, uh, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Gilmore and Councilwoman Torres, uh, President Sandoval, uh, Councilwoman Gonzalez. I'm going to just name everybody and then all the way around. I want to do this introduction again. Um, but I just, I just have to say, I, I think that this is so tremendous, um, of a time to be here and to be able to, um, support and carry on the work that has, that has happened. I think it's already been said, you know, we stand on the shoulders of those who've come before us and to be able to hear those prayers of days that have passed, um, to be able to come to fruition. Um, and there still is so much more. Uh, and we've had, you know, earlier today, we were talking about Buffalo. Donation, donation. I was like Buffalo, uh, transfer. Uh, and, you know, last night we were talking about the, um, Aztec dance, the Don Suss and other, um, Indigenous things that are within our city, that are within us, that are reflected and that we get to be able to support one another. We just went We just went through a tremendous year, our month of February and all of the proclamations that came forward. And I think that now is a time of reflection and learning our values, but also having the opportunity to support one another and to, you know, to kind of push, but to also be kind and to offer that grace to be able to step forward and be there. Doesn't often happen where you work. And, and I think that this is a time that now we get to also celebrate a day. And those days are so significant and so reflective of who we are as a city, who we are as a state, and who we are just as a people. So, thank you for, I have a fire in your... I was right there with you. But I also think about it for future generations. And that's who I think we're thinking about as this moves forward, not only our past, but our future. So, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. So, with every change to the revised municipal code, we hold 15 minutes of public comment. We have four speakers who have been signed up. It was Zoom first. Everyone gets two minutes to speak. There are a number of other speakers, I believe, who have joined us today. That we know is going today. We're starting Zoom with Jesse Paris. And hopefully, you've accepted your promotion. Time and you have two minutes.
Yes, I have. Thank you. Good morning, good morning, good morning. I was watching at home. Those in the subcommittee chambers and the... Paid holiday. I would just be amiss if I didn't bring some history into this that was not mentioned during the presentation. So, after the Civil War, when my ancestors, the foundational Black Americans, the indigenous Americans tried to be freedmen, fought for our freedom from both the colonists and the Indigenous tribes, the five civilized tribes, to be exact, the Cherokee, Muscogee Creek, Chickawatt, One Escapes Me, and then the Seminole, which means runaway. There was a treaty that was signed in 1866 that we were supposed to receive the land and resources that were supposed to be allocated to us after the Civil War. We never received that. Then we fought alongside the American Indian Movement. And it's just not been reciprocated. We're tired of being used for an America value and then abandoned in our time of need. And then also, many Blacks, Indigenous people were changed to Black, Negro, and colored. And this is historical fact. So, like I said, I'd be amiss if I didn't give you this history lesson. But I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Jesse. Do we have anyone else on Zoom? Recording in progress. So, you don't need to go to the microphone. You can just sit right there. Just please introduce yourself for the record again.
Okay. My name is Shannon Elcott. I'm humbled to be in front of you today in support of this proclamation or of this bill. I'm sorry. I come before you today not just as an advocate, but as someone whose life has been deeply influenced by its history. I want to share a personal story. When I was eight years old, I witnessed my mom and my aunt attend a Columbus Day protest and as a result, also be arrested on television. In that moment, it was planted in my brain about how history is too often silenced the faces of marginalized communities. That day, I realized that the stories of my family, the stories my family told me and their resilience to being obscured. And it ignited a fire in my belly for truth and justice. Growing up, I found myself compelled to speak up during Thanksgiving while my peers were learning about sterilized versions of history. I was often found correcting my teachers on the real history of American Indians. I was typically met with eye rolls or impatient nods to move along the lesson, but I persisted, knowing that I thought that the truth is deserved to be heard. When I was 11, I experienced the raw intensity of protest for the first time. And I attended a demonstration proudly in my regalia. But I was met with hostility by being spit on by adults. And I remember standing there trembling with anger and determination. And I made a choice in that moment to channel that anger into education and advocacy, fully aware I might have been the only person, the first Native that people had typically spoken to. Today, I stand for the work being done, not just in our community, but community laws to address historical harm, establishing Indigenous Peoples' Day as a paid city holiday.
Northern leopard frog. Those are just some of the things it does besides allowing those nocturnal animals to take a sip of cold water out of Confluence Park. These are things that are represented by Indigenous Peoples' Day. It represents the land that nurtures us, that provides for our physical, mental, spiritual health every day as we gaze upon mountains, as we breathe the fresh air, as we walk upon Chimacah, grandmother earth. I want to say thank you all for giving me this time. And remember, Denver March Powwow is coming up here this month. And I don't remember a part of it since inception. And I don't quite remember anything the city has done for Native people that bring $8 million over the course of that weekend. This is the 49th year. So, just something to think about. Thank you all for listening to my rhetoric.
We appreciate you being here.
Oh, P'lamia, mi dakue, I see.
Okay, we do have to go back online now for Trini Birch. Great. Go ahead, please.
Hey, y'all. Mike, first, I would like to thank Mrs. Cecilia Boberg Doyak, Mrs. Cecilia, for the beautiful prayer this morning. Many blessings and Doyak to you. Nenania, my name is Trini Birch. My pronouns are she/her. I'm a proud member of the Southern Ute Indian Tribe. My mother is a member of the Southern Ute Indian Tribe, enrolled member of the Southern Ute Indian Tribe. And my father is a member of the Ute Mountain Ute Tribe. I am a community organizer and a member of the Denver American Indian Commission. I stand and I'm watching for our next steps. We're watching for what we believe in and what our foundation is as we grow and live in our communities. And I think Indigenous Peoples' Day is a great opportunity, not only to, to help us learn, but to help everybody around us learn as well. That's what I like to think about when I'm out in public and I'm wearing my regalia, I'm wearing my earrings, is let's Indigenousize our spaces. Let's Indigenousize to make, to make our spaces known, to make ourselves known, to make sure that we can continue our legacy in our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last call. All right, fantastic. Well, thank you so much to the speakers for coming out today. We really appreciate your thoughts and your comments. We will go to questions from members of council next. I do not see anyone in the queue.
And so, do you ever use that in the house?
All right. Thank you. Well, I do have a quick comment. I just want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to the speakers who came out today. I want to say thank you to the advocates who brought this to the city. It's really important that you did that. And I want to say thank you to the sponsors for bringing such an incredible piece of legislation before us. I think I'm so appreciative of your willingness to work to, to create the kind of city that we want to see, that we said we wanted to see when we first got into these offices. And it is just one of those really, we're having one of those really wonderful, amazing moments right now. And so, I want to thank you for creating that space for us and for the community. So, with that, this is a, this is a formal action item. So, I will need a motion and a second from members who sit on this committee. Okay, it's going to be moved by Council President Sandoval, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez Gutierrez. Do we need a roll call vote? I doubt it. Okay, great. Thank you all very much for joining us. This will move forward to the full council. We do have a couple of items on consent, so I want to flag those for everyone. No one has called them off, so they will also move forward. And with that, we are adjourned. Thanks for joining us.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I know that you're turning for sure. I'm saying like standing and walking and, you know, getting more so that we can keep your functional strength up. I've got some pain medicine for you. How about your pain right now? So, all we're, what we're spending our day is symptoms.
All right, thank y'all for tuning in. Lady Chain.
I'm going to move these beds, okay?
Still here is the hospital with Lady Chain. She prayed, thought some prayers. She's scheduled to have another surgery. What is wet called? Yes, it's right here. It's right here, baby. Just set up the straw, baby. Brush, swish, spit out.
Chopstick.
Okay.
All right, y'all, don't go peek.
I'm going to go ahead and leave your... To the right. That works. I'm going to move here just otherwise, okay? She looks scared. Oh, go that way. Okay. This is just part of you... Keep letting you lay here, then you're not going to be able to make it to all the meetings and stuff you were telling me about earlier. You gotta work, try to getting back to normal. Good manipulation. Sometimes we gotta do some good manipulation. I know you want to go to the line.
Hi, Nikki.
Hi, Nikki.
Oh, y'all must, there's a lot. But thank y'all for tuning in. So, it looks like they're gonna move this to the full council for the Indigenous Peoples' Day. All right. So, join us later for Shabaka's Black Experience and Hands. At 7:00 PM Mountain Standard Time. So, we'll see y'all then. I don't know what the topics are going to be off the top of my head, but it should be very interesting. So, we'll see y'all then. Peace.